Welcome, everyone, to our regular City Council meeting for December 4th, 2012. When everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Roll call Sylvia.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant.
Here.
Counselor Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia, we have one item on our consent.
I move consent.
I'll second.
Move and second it all in favor of approving consent, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Sylvia, or thank you counsel, thank you Sylvia. McKay is not here. Okay, hopefully at a future council meeting we have another wonderful member of our youth who received the rank of Eagle Scout that we'll recognize. Next proclamation for Human Rights Week, Jolie Davis, welcome.
Thanks.
How are you today?
I'm great.
Awesome. So today, Jolie Davis is here, and we appreciate that, for essentially declaring December 10th to 15th as Human Rights Week and December 10th as Human Rights Day. The General Assembly of the United Nations approved the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on December 10th, 1948, declaring the recognition of inherent dignity and of the equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family as the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace in the world. A recommitment by the United States to the principles and ideas, ideals of the Universal Declaration is essential for its promise to ensure equality and peace and justice. To the basic human rights addressed in the Universal Declaration include economic, social, and cultural rights as well as civil and political rights, all considered to be equally important in fostering human dignity and freedom. The Universal Declaration calls for all people and governments to promote and respect recognized rights while providing standards of achievement for governments throughout the world. Each year, the international community commemorates this event and recommits itself to the broader achievement of human rights. Numerous community civic religious and nonprofit organizations such as the Human Rights Council of Washington County and other organizations and individuals work to ensure equal rights and protections for all residents. The government of the city of Sherwood and the Human Rights Council of Washington County share this commitment of civil and human rights for all. Now therefore be it resolved, I Keith Mays, Mayor of Sherwood, do hereby encourage the citizens of Sherwood to join me and our council in celebrating Human Rights Week from December 9th to 15th and Human Rights Day December 10th of this year. Hi, Jolie, great to have you here today.
Thank you for having me, Mayor Mays and counsel. My name is Joelle Davis, I am a Twelton City Councilor, so it's really interesting to come to somebody else's council meeting and see how you all do business. I am also on the Human Rights Council of Washington County as their Vice Chair and I have been with them since 2009. They have been in operation since 2006, as Washington County has seen unprecedented growth and change in their population and their diversity. And so, the Human Rights Council of Washington County was formed at the direction of the commission. And we have several goals that we promote, including equal rights as part of public and private sectors, providing feedback to local leaders on issues of equity and diversity, respect and reflect the cultural diversity of our communities, and foster mutual understanding amongst all of our community's residents, and promoting inclusiveness, justice, and equity. And so, the members of the council come from diverse backgrounds socially, ethnically, culturally, and very different professional backgrounds. We have folks who are government representatives and folks from, many folks from law enforcement, education, healthcare, so we have a nice broad group of folks that we do work with. In the last year, the accomplishments of the Human Rights Council included doing more work on human trafficking, in particular in Washington County, there's been more of an emphasis on this in Multnomah County, and we're working to do more monitoring and identifying ways to get more information to Washington County jurisdictions such as ourselves, so that we can better understand the impacts in our communities. We have a traveling exhibit that we can help you folks get if you'd like called No Easy Road on learning discrimination in Oregon. It's a great piece that you can have out in your lobby, and we've had it at a number of different places around Washington County, and it's really informative, and there's some educational materials that go with it too, if you've got schoolkids in the area that would like some information on that. And you can find more information about that at our website, humanrightswashco.com, and you can reach us at humanrightswashco@gmail to get more information. So, we've passed around a copy of a very colorful poster, those of you who'd like to see, we can pass one around the audience if you guys would like to see it. We do a poster contest every year for kids all over Washington County, and this year's theme was Unite for Human Rights, and we do all the way from K through 12, and this year's winner was Rohit Vedam from the Jacob Wismer Elementary School in the 5th grade. And so, we'll be doing a presentation at the 13th Annual Martin Luther K., Martin Luther K. Day Celebration Event for Washington County, which is held at the Southminster Presbyterian Church, and we serve as sponsors to that event along with some interfaith groups and that sort of thing. And we had about 300 people turn out last year, so we're expecting hopefully to get some more this year, but all the kids come and display their artwork, and it's really fun.
Yeah, it's a beautiful poster, and Joe will make note of your contact information about the potential of having that display in our lobby or in the library in the near future.
Right.
So, Jolie, thank you very much for taking time out of your day as another wonderful, busy volunteer in our region. Certainly appreciate your good work in your different roles, and I'd like to give you this, copy of this proclamation.
Thanks very much folks.
May I ask one question?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize, I should have.
That's okay. The traveling, sorry, traveling exhibit that you talked about, is, that is something, how much space does that take up, just out of curiosity? And is it something that you've also exhibited in schools?
I believe that, I know that we have had it at a number of different county buildings and libraries and that sort of thing. I'm not sure if any of the schools have had it specifically. I think that Pacific University has definitely had it at Forest Grove, but I think that for high school kids it would probably be something interesting. I think that it, I believe that it comes in a kiosk kind of thing, and I'm, your lobby's bigger than ours, and it'll fit, from what I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is citizen comments, time to address counsel on any issue not on the agenda. We have forms to fill out if you're interested, you can fill them out before or after. Before certainly makes it easier for us to call you forward. First is Brad Rucker, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
I want to pass you this out, so you just, this is worth a thousand words, and I talk a lot, so this'll minimize my comments.
Okay, please just state your address for the record if you would Brad.
22545 Southwest Park Street, here in Old Town.
Great, thank you.
I went to do a project, it's basically a 288 square foot addition to one of our buildings here in Old Town, 144 square feet of roof space, and it's highlighted there, okay? And so, I had to go through the planning process and the fine planning people, I actually like those people, they're great people, they're very intelligent people, and they helped me quite a bit, but they're pretty much bound to the code. Code, in this particular case, said that I had to pay about $3,000 in planning fees for the 288 square foot addition. Outside of Old Town, I would've had to pay $600. The building I was adding to is 1,200 and some odd square feet, and so, it was more than 10% of the building. And so, because it was more than 10%, it falls into a major modification. And it's my understanding, it was mentioned, I don't know if this is absolutely true, but I paid more in planning fees than Coles did. So, there's a significant inequity here, there's exorbitant and excessive fees in proportion to the scope of work that we did. We went ahead and paid it, I presented this to the planning commission, Julia's familiar with it, I think Chrissana is familiar with the whole scenario. I think the planning commission pretty much agreed with me, they wouldn't say, but I think just the nods I got, they agreed that there are excessive fees for the scope of work that I did, and so I'm here actually to ask for a refund. They said that they didn't have the power to, Julia said that the planning commission didn't have the power, but you do. And so, there was, I think, a significant injustice that happened here. I don't think it was anybody's intention, so don't get me wrong, I just think that the code dictated something that the fine people at the planning desk didn't have the power to use just good judgment and say, hey, you know, we gotta do something here, something's amiss. So, my hope is that, and I've mentioned this too in the code cleanup, just with Julia and Brad and Michelle, that they, there's something that you can give them the power to make a prudent decision across the desk. Because I had to not only do this, I had to send letters out, so there's $2,940 in fees that I had to pay, just planning, just planning, okay? Then I had to send out letters to, within 1,000 feet, that was about 300, so I had to pay $130 in stamps, plus my time mailing all these letters, and guess how many people showed up for my little project, which wasn't Walmart? Zero, zero. I mean, if you look at, if you look at this little map, this was in the back corner of a courtyard that no one ever would've seen. So, so, just, this, it's, I think there's just gotta be something done. Now you may say, well, we gotta treat everybody fairly and even handling, and I totally agree with it. I'm willing to pay my fair share, I really am. I'm willing to go through even the process, which I think sometimes is a bit rigorous, but it is what it is, and I get that, and I get that Old Town is a gem, I get that, okay? But you have to ask the question, why haven't there been many private sector investors in Old Town? I think there's been three in the past 10 years that have really added footprint to buildings in the past 10 years. We've been one, Patrick Lucas has been one, and the lady who's no longer there at the Lavender Tea House has been one. I think there might be one other, but I'm not sure, I don't know that person. So, this is, I think, something, I, we live in Old Town, I pastor in Old Town, we've developed in Old Town, something, I love Old Town, and I'm willing to do the hard work, but these type of fees I think are a barrier.
Yeah, thank you Brad. Joe, why were those fees so high?
Well, actually, I met with Brad this morning on a different project, and he had the courtesy of giving me a heads up that he was going to come tonight and present this, so I had both Tom and Julia look into this, and I think Julia's got some information to explain in detail in terms of how we got here and why.
Okay.
If you want to hear that now, as a counsel.
I think we want to hear it either here tonight or here at another night, but I think we want to hear it, what's the prerogative of counsel?
She's here.
Yeah, we got the time, we got a light agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This was a major modification, I know it's only 288 square feet, but it was 16% addition onto the existing buildings, and so it was a major modification, which triggered a hearing. And basically, we did the other land use action hearing required, which was $2,425, public notice for a Type 3 or 4 because it's in Old Town, and the process was $265, and then the Old Town overlay review of $250, so it's a total of $2,940. And I just, just, because that's a lot, and it does sound like a lot, I checked to kind of see, well, how much did we spend? How much did it cost us to process this? And staff time, just Brad alone, was $2,173. We also did the published notice, I agree, the 1,000-foot notice is expensive to process, that cost about $385, even though we only charged $265 for the public, for the notice fee, that includes both the published and mailed notice. And that doesn't include the staff time to go to the planning commission, the planning commission, they don't get paid, but the, just the time to put on a planning commission meeting, take staff to set up, tear down, so regardless of what you think about the process, the process costs that much money. And that's certainly something that when we do the next code cleanup project, which one of the next ones is looking at the Old Town overlay process and standards, certainly something that we probably should talk about, is this too much process for these types of additions? But just perspective, that's what the fees were, and that's basically, the fees covered the cost to process that.
Was the major bump in expense due to it being declared a major modification and therefore then requiring the hearing, that type of the planning commission hearing?
I believe so, yes.
And it was declared a major modification because of the percentage of the building?
Correct.
So, a reasonable person could say that it should meet not just a percentage, but a square footage, you know, type of a delta going forward type of thing?
If I could add just one other thing, because it was a major modification, it cost me about $3,000 more in architectural fees as well, because my architect had to go through the code to just remedy all that stuff and to present to the planning commission. So, it cost me a lot more than $3,000, so.
Certainly, there could be a threshold, and I believe that when we went through the process to create the minor modification process, there was discussion about that, but, and it's certainly something we can continue to discuss, but for perspective, if you had a 300 square foot building and you were increasing it by 288 square feet, that would be a fairly significant change to the structure. And so, I think that's where the planning commission and ultimately the council, when you adopted the triggers for a minor modification, didn't have a minimum square footage, but it's certainly something that we can talk about.
And, from my perspective, it was a big fee for a little thing. And I know I'd be interested in maybe getting a recommendation from staff on a refund of some level, but that's just my perspective, other comments from councilors?
I just have a question, I really appreciate your comments, because you're asking us to make sure that we don't have barriers to improvement in Old Town. And we're gonna, if we have these types of thresholds, I happen to go to that hair salon, so I'm there all the time, and I walk there all the time, I didn't even know it was happening. It was that, in my mind, minor. So, we're gonna have this problem with the buildings in Old Town because they're small. And so, how do we set appropriate thresholds, because it does, it had to have been a small thing, because I was there. So, that's the problem I see, is if you set a threshold with percentage or even square foot, these buildings in Old Town are small, that's the nature of the beast, but how do you make it reasonable? And it does not, in my mind, seem reasonable. I understand that it took staff time, and I understand everything, because we triggered, but we talked about this as we went through code cleanup, that when we ran into a snag, that was our time to sit back and be reasonable. So how do we get to reasonable from here? Because I don't think we're reasonable yet, in my mind.
Other comments, councilor?
Well, I, I don't know why my mic's not working, okay, there we go. I attended the planning commission meeting that he came to, and there was discussion, and I want to kind of maybe bring this up so that we can understand why the staff time was so expensive, because there was discussion at the planning commission meeting that, because I want to understand that if this project costs this much staff time, is it always going to cost this much staff time when we have a project that is a large percentage, but a small project? And there were, there was a discussion about that this structure was built before application was made to build it, and so there was a retroactive staff time needed in this one? Is that the case? Is that why? Or will it always cost this amount of staff time to process it?
I can't speak to, I don't believe that there was any, when we receive an application, we assign a job number, so I don't think that we assign, you know, we went back and charged time to something after the application came in, so I don't know that there was that retroactive piece. I think the biggest amount of time is just, it's Old Town, it's got Old Town overlay standards, and even though it was minor and in, you know, in the back, we still have to review the standards, we have to prepare the staff report, we have to, you know, go through that process. And so, you know, the, as we move forward, I think the best way to make sure it's reasonable is really looking at the Old Town standards and really making sure that we don't have standards that are over burdensome, especially for new development. This project was new, it wasn't an old building, but the way the standards are written, you still have to apply the Old Town overlay standards. And so, and we haven't gotten to that part of the code cleanup yet, and that is certainly something that staff recognizes, is something that we need to deal with, because it frustrates staff too.
Bill?
Well, I think that code is code, and I deal with code every day, the electrical code, but there's always been an opportunity, if you had a disagreement, to appeal it. So I think if we have something in effect that will let someone who has a special circumstance either repeal it or get another look at it, I think that our intent as citizens is to make sure it's easy, cost-effective, and fair. And when we run into these instances that aren't, they gotta be able, they have to be able to bring them to us and bring it to our attention, and we should stop and look and make sure that they are reasonable.
A little addition on the back of a building that you're never gonna see, wow. So, other comments or questions from councilors?
If I could just say one other thing, I don't have a lot of money, you know? And I think just the fee and such, it's like, you know, we're trying to build something, we're trying to add, you know, we basically now will have three tenants in Old Town. And these are, these are business tenants that we're personally trying to draw into Old Town, that are gonna spend money at lunches and in other places in Old Town, and, you know, I'm so for Old Town, but we don't have these deep pockets that, it's like, it costs $7,000 to do this, to do this addition, you know, $7,000 apart from the fees, that's the building, that's the building cost. I mean, I did a lot of it myself, but, you know, that's the building cost.
Does that include your architectural costs?
Doesn't include the architectural costs. Cost me, he was gonna charge me $1,000, but because of the code, he had to go through that, the major modification code thing, it cost me a little over $3,400, and he gave me a 25% discount. I can show you the bill.
Any other comments from council?
I've got one more question for Brad, just to clarify that this is not new square footage, you just covered it and closed it?
Basically, yeah, see, it was, that was a deck, and so, so in terms of, if you look from, you know, like airplane view, you know, top view, we, there was, there was 144 square foot that, it was actually partially covered already, okay? And so, just that one little piece was covered, and then we enclosed 288 square feet of the 432 square foot deck. We enclosed it to make it new, you know, office, or, you know, it's actually, it's for an art, art space. Yeah, that's what it is, so.
Counselor?
Well, my question was, what was the, what were you going to use this new space for?
From my wife's art studio.
Okay.
So my request is the same, that would be ask staff to come back with a recommendation of a refund. I know-
There's a couple issues, and that's helpful, Mr. Mayor, that you've addressed by bringing this to our attention. One, is the whole process, is this the right process for some of our, and then, code is one thing, but through experience, this does seem excessive. So you've raised an important issue that we need to look at our code. I'm very intrigued by your point that this may be stopping other types of development in Old Town, and we may want to see development in Old Town, but our, the way our processes are set up is discouraging or is a disincentive. So that's very important for us as staff to kind of look at and take a hard look at. Two, the refund, I will talk certainly with the attorney's office, I see no code language, and you need to have the ability to be able to make refunds. And you, are the, the council establishes the fee schedule every year, so without it being clear, you are the ones that can waive fees and things like that, but there's no code language that really clearly gives you that authority, and that's been bothersome to me since I've been here, because in other cities that I've worked, we've had that. So when there is an issue, there's clear who's the decision maker. And I think that's what you said, staff kind of said, we can't decide this.
Their hands are tied.
Yeah, so, so that's another issue that I want to look at. And then, the suggestion is when something seems crazy, what do you do with that? You ended up paying everything and going through your process, but there's no kind of opportunity to bring that to your attention as the policymakers and say, timeout. You know, I know this is, was the intent, and this is the fee schedule, but this doesn't seem reasonable, can we have a discussion about that? So, I mean, there's different parts of this problem that you've brought to our attention that we'd like to work on and bring back to you with some recommendations, so.
I just wanted to say, echo what Bill said and what you said at the end there, if there's a way to avoid spending the staff time and having that charged against us and sort of do a sanity check before, that's really where we want to go with any future process, in my mind. Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Butterfield, I appreciate that.
Brad, we don't have an answer for you today, but-
That's fine. If I could just say one thing, you know, I don't know if you've ever sat across the desk from the planning people or even the building people, these are really intelligent, well-thought-out, just great people, they can make prudent decisions. I'll tell you, Brad could look at this, and he kind of shook his head. I mean, alls he had to do is probably walk down the site. I mean, I know that's like, hard to write in a code, but it's just like common sense, you know? I don't know if you can write a code that says, use common sense, not too common sense.
Right.
Can I just say, add one more observation to the numbers that Brad provided? Excluding the additional architectural costs that you incurred, and listening to what your total construction costs were, for, which is about 7,400 bucks, your, the, uh, planning fees are 43% of the cost of construction, and if you include the additional architectural costs you incurred, then all his extra fees were 84% of what his true construction costs were.
Makes me feel good, man, thanks.
Just so you feel good about that.
I have a better question, what's your cost-benefit analysis? How long does it, how much revenue do you have to receive in to afford to expand?
Well, that's gonna be an-
That's sort of a rhetorical question, I understand, but-
Well, you know, and here's, here's the deal, we own those buildings, we're gonna have, we're gonna have two leasers, two people leasing the buildings, and this is the key thing why we're even doing this, is my wife is gonna get free rent. And so, so, you know, she was paying 725 a month, and, and so, figure out how long that'll take, it's probably about a year and a half by the time we get that paid for. So, it's gonna be a good thing, but we thought it was gonna be significantly less, and right now, I mean, things are tight with everybody, you know? So that was, it's taken a pretty big bite out of our savings.
Great, thanks Brad.
Okay, thanks so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
RJ Claus?
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. I enjoyed this last presentation and your discussion. What I find almost amusing about it is how little he knew about Old Town. You understand the hotel McClure, Doug McClure and I rebuilt after being burned out. We restored it as close as we could, period. You understand you took that for a city hall, under the promise you would never move here. Then we rebuilt the Robin Hood Theater that went through the 96 earthquake and was proved absolutely struct- absolutely structurally sound when the only other one was lost. You forced us out of that, and then Schultz destroyed it. Those were your two historic buildings in this downtown, one of them, one of a kind that will never be replaced, an organ that rose out of the floor, a crying room, fabulous upstairs apartment, a restaurant, and a theater, and it was destroyed. We built three of the buildings, I'm not gonna go here, and McClure said I wouldn't work in that town for anything. You might check your history, because it isn't some two bit little art studio, no insult intended, that's your problem. And these were not little buildings, Robin. All of those buildings were well over 7,000 square feet we worked on. And our whole damn effort cost us three years, and we had to pay to get rid of them because you forced us. So check your history, because the staff doesn't even know that. But that's not really what I'm here for. We are preparing to litigate at, to go to Luba with the land, with the signed code. Under a Supreme Court case I'm not gonna mention, because it's pointless, I need the record here, we've had a chance to mediate that. Now, what that simply means is you go to mediation, you determine if there's any value, and then if there is, you do it. If you don't like it, we can go back and litigate. I thank you for voting, two to five, not to do that. But I am required, now that you have let me exhaust that administrative remedies, to tell you a couple of the things. We have two groups that are looking at taking that into federal court. Your danger is this, under, under Title 42 USC 1983 and 88, you may run into the same problems San Diego did, when I wrote their code that passed the Supreme Court, and they tried to write another one that didn't. It was a million and a half in legal fees, plus they had to pay sign users a lot of money to get out of what they done, into the millions. I don't think you're San Diego, but I'd spend a little time thinking about if I'm gonna exhaust my administrative remedies through mediation, which you don't, and I thank you. Because that's in writing for Mr. Gall, and I appreciate that. But now I must tell you the ugly part. What the Supreme Court requires is that I tell this council a delightful thing from our viewpoint, after all the things I've seen done, like the Robin Hood Theater wrecked, the hotel taken away and then sold at an enormous profit, all kinds of things I've seen this town do in goodwill in dealing with landowners that restored things, especially landowners that gave you, sell Olson Park Walkway, contributed to the, well, we didn't contribute, we created the refuge. It would be nothing if it weren't for our efforts in that. So it's delightful to sit here. If you lose this in federal court and it goes there, you could be looking at literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. The legal fees in Berkeley, Illinois were about 575, in San Diego, they were a million and a half, and then we had to replace everything we'd taken down. I don't even know what that number was. But I've now told you, you're looking at some place between 500 and 5 million, that's your finality figure. Uh, I'm happy to go on with this, particularly given a code that actually bans Cohen. And if you know Cohen, which most of you don't, good luck. But anyway, I thank you for that, and I'm just trying to put it on the record, this is an end of administrative remedies and finality. And please leave your forwarding address, Keith, because we're gonna need you in the worst sort of way.
Oh, there is, there is entertainment, and then there's really entertainment. I believe Mr. Claus was confused on a number of, there's, there's some, some, he's confused on a number of facts, um, because I believe the, the appeal date on the signed code has lapsed.
It has been appealed and it's, um, before Luba at this point.
All right. Great. Next, Tammy Stephens. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tammy Stephens, 23617 Southwest Voss, V O S S Place in Sherwood. And I just wanted to talk about the importance of sports fields and the difference I think they make in youth. I have the opportunity to help Coach Lawrence with the football program, and we had, um, he's like his team mom coordinator, and, and we had a kid a few years ago who came through the program, and when he was a freshman, he didn't have a ton of support at home, and he, it really could go either way, whether or not he kinda stayed in school or didn't stay in school, and, you know, what choices he could make. And by his sophomore year, he was a little more, and I think he had skipped schools in, in his freshman year, and his sophomore year, he was a little bit more on the straight and narrow. Junior year, even more so. By his senior year, he was one of our team captains and is doing great now. He's in, um, the military, and he just passed some, um, test in his training yesterday for nuclear something. And so, anyway, we're, I, we're really proud of him, and it made a difference for him. I truly, truly believe that had he not had sports, I think he would've gone the other direction. So I just think it's really important that the kids have sports fields available to them, and, um, that's all.
Great. Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks.
Bradley Turner? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Bradley Turner, addressed 22862 Southwest Forest Creek Drive, Unit 203, here in Sherwood. I'm also here, uh, just really, first of all, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job. So I feel comfortable enough to come here and speak, it's the first time I've ever spoke at any type of meeting like this. But, um, when it comes to sports fields and athletics, I do wanna speak up. My wife and I are both teachers here in Sherwood School District, my wife and I are both coaches here in Sherwood School District. And we value education, and we are educators first. I'm not a coach first, neither is my wife. But that being said, athletics keep a lot of kids motivated. And the fields, whether it be at Edie Ridge, or Snyder Park, or wherever, those fields are used throughout the entire community. So if we were to talk about how far a dollar can be stretched and who it affects, and how it affects the most people, those fields affect the most people. My church has picnics in the park, our children go and play on the turf there at Snyder, and they play all over in the fields there. The, I coach at Sherwood High School on the football team, and all those fields are used, not just by us, whether it's fundraising during Thanksgiving, or whether it's fun runs, or whatever it may be, adults use them. I have two infant children, um, my daughter and I would go and we kick penalty kicks over at Snyder, she loves it. Those parks affect so many people. And so if any, any expenditure that goes towards those, to maintain those, to keep those as kind of being a beacon and a, a symbol for kind of pride in the community, I know a lot of people feel that way after the state championship, both the run by the soccer team, then also by the football team. Sports are not the only thing, but they definitely do help a lot, a lot of students, and they definitely are a symbol for the community, a source of pride. And so any expenditures we can have to maintain those fields, I think is money well spent.
Great. Thank you very much, Bradley. Appreciate it. Coaching the high school football?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah.
Way to go.
I like to think that we did a great job, but really the kids deserved it.
Absolutely.
They earned it, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Looking forward to next year already.
You betcha.
Good coaching, Seth, right?
Congratulations.
Thanks, Bradley. That is the last, uh, form I have. Anyone else like to give comment? Yeah?
Eugene Stewart, 22595 Southwest Pine. On this issue with the building permits, I know when we remodeled our office across the street, we put a ramp up around it, new roof, uh, we did not have to, to go before the planning commission, uh, but that was before you changed a lot of the rules, but at that time, the planning director had the ability to look at what was going on and say, no, you don't, you waive the requirements and let you to go forward without going through all that process. And then I believe, um, anybody on the council could've appealed his, his or her decision. So that was a fairly simple solution. So how did we get from such a simple solution to such a complicated solution? Uh, maybe we need to look back at what we had and put that back into the code where the planning director has a little bit more. Besides, everything's gotta be built to code, so there's no question on that. And, uh, I think, you know, some of the planning, especially when the property is not even considered historical because it's been modified. We say we have a historical district, but we really haven't, I don't know if any of the buildings down here are actually on the historical register or not. That would be one thing to look at.
But being on the register doesn't necessarily preclude it from being a historical building.
I understand that, but, you know, generally before the, the state of Oregon, they need to recognize it, get it on there. So if it isn't there, and so, I mean, everything seemed to come out okay, our tenants are happy, and it worked fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to City Manager Report.
Mayor and City Council, I have a, two or three items to share. The first is I wanna remind, uh, both the council, uh, the members of the public here and, and, uh, watching that tomorrow evening, there is gonna be an informational kickoff meeting for the Cedar Creek Trail Project that will take place here in this room from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. It's an opportunity for the public to learn more about the project and learn how they can be part of the effort as it proceeds over the next few years. If you need more information, either contact Julia Haduk or Michelle Miller, who's coordinating the project. So that's an important meeting tomorrow night, um, here at City Hall. Mary-Lic Middleton is in the audience, and, uh, he's been working hard. I've had a series of meetings with him. He's been attending a lot of, uh, different boards and commission meetings. He's been meeting with my department heads to try to, um, prepare for his swearing in in mid-January, and, um, asking lots of good questions, and we're trying to get information to him, so he can hit the ground running, uh, after the first of the year. So just an update on that. And then, um, uh, we have a new employee that I would like to have her direct supervisor introduce to you. I wanna start doing this when we bring on new staff, I want them to have the opportunity to come and, um, have some face time with the city council, and, and so I'm gonna have Sylvia Murphy, our city recorder, introduce our, our newest employee briefly to you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome here to our staff, Colleen Rush. Colleen is right here in the audience. She's filled a part-time position, um, in our city recorder council office. So this week is her first week. Colleen is a resident of Sherwood for about 10 years, and I'll give you a little bit of a history from her. She, um, has a bachelor's degree in political science from the, um, Oregon State. She has.
I'm flanked.
She has a prior work experience with, as a legislative assistant, working for Congress back in DC, um, has had experience as a project analyst, um, for an economic development agency, um, and I'm so pleased to have her here with us at the city.
Great. Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for doing that, Joe.
Yeah, that's good. Any questions for me or the department heads that are here before we move on?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, council announcements?
Just a quick one.
Yep.
I just wanna quickly remind the citizens that are here and the ones that might hear, there is still a seize candy sale going on at the Sherwood Senior Center, and, um, it is a great time to go buy those gifts for your teachers and perhaps staff, and say thank you for all they've done for, and happy holidays. But it, you can order it right at the front desk, and I think they have probably some one pound boxes that you can pick up and buy as well. But it does go to benefit our seniors, and their gift shop is open every day from 9:00 to 4:00, I believe, as well, and they have handmade amazing craft items there.
I believe they got gift certificates available too?
Oh, right, yeah, the gift certificates, so you can give them and they can go pick out their favorite candy.
Excellent. Councilor Langer?
I've just got an interesting tidbit of data to share from our last CERPAC meeting. There's oftentimes been discussion about parking studies and parking problems downtown Sherwood. So when there was a parking study that was done as part of the new and upcoming community center project, I thought that would be fascinating data to share. And so this study was conducted on, uh, Wednesday, August 5th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and the, uh, uh, there was about 515 total stalls, parking stalls, available to the public in the, in the study area, and of the combined total of on-street and, and off-street parking, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM was the peak, and there was 37.7% of the parking spots used.
Councilor Langer, the 5th was a Sunday, right?
August 5th, eight, uh, it was a Wednesday.
Are you sure?
According to, according to the study, it says right here, I'm looking at, it says Wednesday, August 15th.
Oh, it's the August 15th, because the 5th, we were coming back on a, it was a Sunday. Because that was my friend's birthday, and we were on the ferry.
You're right, I misspoke. I said the 5th, it was the 15th.
I thought, why are they doing a parking study on a Sunday?
Thanks for, you're paying attention. Yeah.
Sort of like Rain Man that way.
That's great. Anyway, I just thought that was, uh, interesting information. That's all of that.
Good. Are we gonna get a copy of that, or?
Certainly.
Or?
Yeah, Tom, Tom Scott.
Yeah, actually, um, we were planning on doing a work session with you. We've done one with, um, both, uh, CERPAC and the, um, planning commission, and you were our next stop, so I, I don't know if it's scheduled for the 18th, if not, January, but we certainly can give you copies of the report in advance, so.
So what we're saying is that 37.5% of the stalls were used at the peak time of the day?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Rather, rather than lightning. Any other, was that, that was it?
That's all.
Other announcements from councilors? Councilor Butterfield?
Hey, one more time, I just wanna make sure that, since Brad came and spoke today, maybe I could use you as a vehicle. I've called Greg. We, as a council, wanna invite the entire team and the coaching staff here on the 18th.
Will there be a fitness run?
For recognition, so if you could pass that along, we'd appreciate it. So once again, congratulations for being Oregon's 5A state football champions.
I'll see Coach Lawrence on Friday, actually. Yeah?
Second time in three years.
Yes.
And the girls' soccer team was second. They were runner up.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
And we would be, that would be the beginning of the meeting, just.
On the 18th?
Yeah.
Okay. What was the timing again?
Seven. Unless you tell us a time, another time is better, we can adjust.
Tammy's a team mom, she's writing this down right now.
Yeah, you should be talking to her, actually.
Excellent. Um, no other council announcements? We are gonna adjourn to a renewal work session. Uh, in the room, meeting, um, ever so briefly, um, before, earlier this evening, first reconvene, do I need to do anything beyond that procedural? Sounds not, anyways, we did, had an executive session in which council did the annual performance evaluation of our, one of our four employees, um, our city recorder Sylvia Murphy. And to be brief, um, uh, after rigorous questioning and commenting, uh, with the council, we quite unanimously concluded that, um, we are, we are fortunate as a community, as a council, to have Sylvia Murphy working for us, um, in this capacity. She's, uh, does an outstanding job, uh, represents our community, um, the council professionally all the time, helps us do our job better, um, and we are very appreciative and grateful. So thank you, Sylvia. Um, and we're glad you love your job, because not everybody could love that job. So you, you fit like a hand in a glove, made to order. So the one question that I wanna ask council is, um, annually, after we do a performance review, an executive session, we come up to open session, and make any changes to her compensation that council desires. It can be pretty much anything. Um, uh, per the contract, she is eligible for COLA unless we don't, um, make her eligible for COLA, which is awarded in July 1 of each year. It's the same formula that the rest of city staff is eligible, assuming it's on the budget. And, uh, she is not a city employee, she's a council employee, but if you were to mimic And she is not a city employee, she's a council employee, but if you were to mimic what city employees are eligible for potentially each year is a step increase, which is 2.5% until they're topped out in their category, and then they aren't eligible for additional steps. So, prior to the meeting, council was given salary comparisons of like communities, as well as salary history, in which we have given Sylvia. Any comment on changes you want to suggest for Sylvia for the upcoming year? If it's a COLA, normally it would be a July 1 implementation. If it's a salary, like a step adjustment, it would be a January 1 adjustment. Thoughts?
I want to point out that, first of all, I agree that we all think Sylvia's an outstanding employee, and, and I think that, for me, I would say that, that it's shown that she, she, what outstanding is, is, I'm not using loosely, she does stand out, and I think that we have a better employee in Sylvia than a lot of cities have in that position. And I also want to point out that in prior years, not only Sylvia, but, but all of the employees have not always gotten the step or the COLA or whatever. There've been things we've done that, that hasn't been an automatic thing. And I think it was last year that it was only the COLA but not the step. I think that's what it was last year, as I recall. Am I right, council? Is that how that, what we did last year? The COLA only and not the step last year? Something like that. All right, you know what, I don't have, I don't have to nail it down just to make my point.
It was a 3%. It was no COLA, it was a 3% only.
3%. Okay, that's what, that's what we did. Okay.
And the previous year was COLA only.
Okay. It was the previous year that was COLA only. Okay. So I think that Sylvia understands that, that we have to be able to defend what we do to the citizens and make sure it's understandable to the citizens. However, I would be supportive of a step and a COLA this year. COLA, I would say we might as well just keep the COLA on time with the other employees, but a step of January 1, I'd be supportive of that. Everybody, every employee knows that, that every year is different, and, but we, we want to, we want to fairly compensate our good employees, and I think Sylvia is outstanding. So that's where I'm on that, willing to hear what anybody else thinks.
Other comments from councilors? Councilor Henderson?
Well, I would second that recommendation by Council President Grant, and I think that the thing that stands out to me this year, two things are, is we had two elections this year, which went basically seamlessly. And secondly, is we have a new city manager who has been very complimentary, new city manager has been very complimentary of her in his transition, and I think that that is something I don't want to overlook, and I think that's a testimony to her.
And I had to work with him in interim for a while.
True.
She jerked around.
Yes. On that side note, so, and I think that that's an important part of her personality, is putting the mission of the city above perhaps her own personal interests and issues we've had with other members of staff. And so that, I think, merits both opportunities to reward her.
Any other comments?
I don't know if you want to call that a second, but that's.
Sounds like those two have nailed.
Yeah. I feel really good about that.
So, Council President Grant, if you want to make that a motion.
Okay, I would like to move that we award a step on the regular schedule, which I think you said was.
July 1.
Oh, no, January 1.
January 1.
Oh, yeah, so 2.5% raise, January 1. January 1, and the regular COLA, whatever it is, on the July 1 schedule for Sylvia. That's my motion.
And.
Second.
And a second discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving a 2.5% pay raise effective January 1, 2012, 2013, excuse me, for Sylvia with a COLA adjustment, the same formula as the rest of city staff on July 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Sylvia. And now, we are going to adjourn.
Sure.
To a URA board work session.